All right, it's seven o'clock. Meeting in the Hood County Justice Center, 1200 West Pearl. It's November the 8th, 2011. The meeting is called to order. Would you please stand? We'll have the invocation.
Our Heavenly Father, Lord, as we're gathered here tonight, be with us and guide us and direct us and send your wisdom that we may do the county business under your direction, under your guidance, under your leadership and wisdom. Lord, be with our country, be with our soldiers as they're in foreign lands, in danger. Lord, just be with them and help them. And as I say, Lord, be with all of us here tonight. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Do you join me, please? We pledge allegiance to the flag of our great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want me to pledge to Texas?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Y'all be seated. Amy, we have any special presentations tonight? Very good. Thank you very much. Citizens' comment. Does anyone have any comment? They'd like to say anything, address any subject that's on the agenda tonight? If anybody does, the sheriff has a form for you to fill out.
Lord, you just can't do any business, can you?
Okay. Consent agenda? Anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
There ain't no comment, Judge. Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Have a motion made by, uh, seconded by Commissioner Heavington to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
I have one question for purchasing, Judge.
Okay.
I didn't see a list in my packet of what... It says declare miscellaneous. Is that something in one of those storage units? Okay, that's what it was. It...okay. That's what I thought, but I will make sure.
It's not that car we're talking about.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments? Then, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all. Next item is item number eight. It's subdivision Roads and Plats, Road Operations. You have anything for us tonight, Mr. Lenny?
Yes, sir. Judge Cochrane, Commissioners, this public hearing is to consider and take appropriate action in combining Lot 16 and 17R1, creating a two and six tenths acre lot called 16R. Property is located at the corner of Divot Drive and Equestrian Drive in Block 2 of Pecan Estates, Section 2. This replat is located within the water quality district of precinct number 2.
Okay, public hearing is now open. On replat of Lot 16R, Block 2, Pecan Estates, Section 2. Does anybody have any comments? No comments? Then the public hearing is closed. I have a motion to...
So move.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Heavington to approve the replat of Lot 16R, Block 2, Pecan Estates, Section 2 in Commissioners Precinct 2. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have a public hearing now to consider and take appropriate action for site development plan on the gardens of Decordova Phase 2 located at 5314 North Gate Road. Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to address...
Judge, Mr. Feaster's in the audience to represent.
Mr. Feaster, you want to come forward and give us a rundown?
Sure. Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. My name's Mark Feaster. I'm working with America First Real Estate Group out of Omaha, the current owner of Phase 1, and we're ready to build Phase 2. It's, uh...the gardens of Decordova are 76 units of senior housing, 55 and older. The first phase has 76 units in it and is completely full, and we have in excess of 30 on a waiting list to get into that one, not knowing that we were planning the Phase 2. So at this time, we're asking for approval of the site plan for the 34 additional units. The only addition to the existing development will be this cul-de-sac. Everything else, the streets, utilities are in around the circle, so to speak, for the ones that'll be located on the street. On that area right there, the cul-de-sac will go right to the upper side of the lake that's there in the front of the pond that's in the front. So be happy to answer any questions. These are some pictures of the existing units and the clubhouse. We are in conjunction with this second phase. We're going to expand the clubhouse a little bit, remove a maintenance room in it, open it up for the tenants, and we're also considering adding a pool with a lap pool for the residents. That seems to be a high item on their list of things they would like to see out there. So...
Where are you going to put the pool?
More than likely in this area right here. There's a lot of open space in the center circle. You can see the cul-de-sac at the lower left-hand side. Right behind the three units you can see there, there's a lot of open space, so it'll probably go right in there.
Okay.
Is this AMUD Utilities, Leonard? AMUD Utilities?
AMUD, yes.
And we already have their approval, so...
Is anybody having more questions? Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Anyone else have any comments about the site development plan for the gardens of Decordova Phase 2? No one? And the public hearing is closed. I will entertain a motion to approve this.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion made by Heavington, seconded by Roan, to approve this. Is there any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Budget and finance. Line item, consider line item amendments.
Judge, I brought no budget amendments tonight. I don't know if any elected officials would like to ask for any. I'm not aware of any.
Okay, thank you very much. You're to be congratulated.
Oh, thank you.
All right, then item number two is consider bills.
Judge and Commissioners, the bills for your consideration tonight total $335,112.24. Some of the larger items are listed on the summary page that I provided to you. Of course, we continue to have large bills to attorneys to represent indigent defendants. Those payments come to $23,077.50. For the City of Granbury Utilities, $27,041.99. To LED Enterprises, Inc., this is for uninterruptible power supply battery backups for dispatch computers, To Northeastern Asphalt LLC, $18,398.40 for road ops materials. To Somerville County, $10,412 for out-of-county inmates. To Spillman Technologies, for the annual maintenance contract, $47,991. To train, a progress payment on the courthouse restoration, $49,663. That leaves just over $50,000 remaining on the train contract for the courthouse restoration. I have provided payment warrants for each one of the items on the list of accounts payable. I recommend them for your approval, and I would ask for your approval so that we could get the bills paid.
Move before we ratify paying the bills.
Second.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Heavington, seconded by Commissioner Simpson to ratify paying the bills. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Dan. Next item is consider and take appropriate action to fill the Family Consumer Science position. I believe Marty is in the...oh, we have...yeah.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to present an applicant this evening for the position of Family Consumer Science position here in Hood, Somerville County.
I just handed you the resume for the applicant this evening, and again, before I present, Breann Langdon, I want to thank you for your continued support of Texas AgriLife Extension Service within Hood County. Without your support, the program wouldn't be what it is today, and I appreciate that. But tonight, I wanted to present a product of our 4H program in the state of Texas. We have tonight a 10-year 4H member that came up through the 4H program, competed in all Family Consumer Science Fashion Show, Consumer Decision Making, Educational Presentations, competed at State 4H Roundup, which is the state competition for those that have competed on the district level and so forth. And in the end, at the end of that 10-year career, was a 4H Foundation Scholarship winner, was one of our big 4H scholarship winners, and attended Texas A&amp;M on a 4H scholarship. And so after we got through interviewing, and Marty and I, and Cody G. Feller in Somerville County, and Dr. Susan Balabina, our Regional Program Director for Family Consumer Science, after we interviewed and we all were in agreement that Breann Langdon was the candidate that we wanted to come forth with. Also in her, she received her bachelor's degree from Texas A&amp;M. Her work experience, right now, she's in the job at Harbor Lakes, and if you look at it, it's very similar to what Extension does as far as committee work, selecting those individuals to be on committees, to work towards a common goal, and come up with end results. And that's what Extension's all about, to address the needs of the clientele in the county, whether it be adults or whether it be youth. And tonight, I would like to present Breann Langdon for the position of Family Consumer Science here in Hood County, Hood, Somerville County position. And if y'all have any questions, we should be willing to answer it.
Y'all have any questions for Breann?
Press the resume, Breann.
And I guess it's still a shared position, you said, with us in Somerville?
Yes.
So Somerville Court is...
Be presenting her next Monday in Somerville County.
Motion to approve, Judge?
Second.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan, to approve the hiring of Breann Langdon for the AgriLife Extension Service Consumer Science position. And is there any further discussion about this? Yes, sir.
Just some details. She will participate in what we call the First Step Program. So she will do a month, basically it's extended shadowing, in Ehrath County with Donna White, a tenured FCS agent, and it will be, as far as payment-wise, Extension will cover that during that first 30 days or that first month in the First Step Program. So basically, her first day here in Hood County will be January the 2nd. With her two weeks' notice and that, she'll start with us December the 1st and work with Donna, and Donna will also be her mentor for the year, for a full year as well.
Talk show is just 10 days away after she goes to work, so I guess she'll...
That'll get her going pretty quick. I would imagine there'll be two of them she has to deal with, because I imagine Somerville County's is right around the same time, too, isn't it?
I'm a talk show girl, too, so it's all right.
Are you used to it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Was any further discussion?
Any questions for you, Breann?
Just excited to be here and very excited about the opportunity.
Still see you every Thursday?
Absolutely.
All right.
That's another thing. Her community involvement is very good as well, so... And I appreciate y'all's support.
It really is.
She's done well getting over being an Aggie.
Oh! Now, that's an Ohio State kind of guy talking, so...
I'll see y'all tomorrow, right?
Well, we're going to vote right now. You want to stay on that?
Yes, you'll see us tomorrow.
Yes, you'll see us tomorrow.
Yes, you will.
Okay, I'm not going to be there. I can't make it, so anyway.
Thank y'all very much.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Welcome. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
All right, the next item is consider and take appropriate action to elect three members to the Hood County Appraisal Board District, and I have ballots here, and... Two or three times. This is for the...going to elect three, the top three.
Did you bit it right in on it?
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like that it is Walter Baldry from La Pan and Colin Chris from Leonard's territory, and Tony Smith. Anybody have any questions about that? Mary, did you get all that? Okay.
So that's the three that we'll be sending back to Greg for our nominee, our three nominee members that we voted on?
Yes.
Need to ratify that?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan, to elect those three members. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Purchasing, consider and take appropriate action to approve dates and timelines for proposed RFQ 2011-017 enterprise plan for the recreation facility vendor.
Good evening, Judge and Commissioners. About this, the advertisement of the RFQ is set for November 12th and 19th. Responses to the RFQ are due on December the 19th, and then after that, it'll go to the selection committee, and eventually to give a preliminary suggestion of award, and then the Commissioners Court will take and negotiate a final contract. If it doesn't work out with the number-one choice vendor, we simply tell them, "Thank you very much," and we move to the second one. So this is just for public information. I know there's been a lot of questions and when it's going to be and all that, and this will hopefully suffice for the information.
You're going to name your six members as well.
Okay. The next item was to name the selection committee. It is Amy Dykes from Personnel, Jackie Solomon from Information Systems, Donald Lenny, Director of Road Ops, Kathy Davis, our Treasurer, Brian Fine, our Fire Marshal, and Sissy Cardwell, who is a member of the Texas Assessor's Office. And I will be like an overseer of that committee.
Any further discussion on that item?
Move to approve.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Heavington. Second?
Second.
Did you do that, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I couldn't hear. All right, have a motion made by Commissioner Heavington, seconded by Commissioner Simpson to approve the members that Nelda read off. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action on 2007 Ford Taurus from District Attorney's Office.
There's a Ford Taurus that they have that they're wanting to dispose of by auction. I think it's what was replaced by the truck they bought earlier.
Correct.
And right now, the mail car needs to go into the shop for repair. It was in a small fender bender that it was just the mail car involved, nothing else. It hit a post. I'm going to need something to run the mail, and I would like to take it to Acton and use it for a few days and not auction it at this exact moment in time. But also, it only has 65,000 miles on it. We're not going to get a lot for it in auction, and I...my question to y'all is, would it be better served to use it elsewhere in the county?
I think we need a workshop on this car. It'll take about a week to get yours fixed, is that what you're saying?
As far as I know, yes.
But the DA's wanting to surrender it back to purchasing at this time?
Yes. They're ready to bring it to us.
I'd make that motion to allow purchasing to take possession of it, but I'd like to have a workshop on the car.
Okay.
At a later date, Judge.
Second.
All right, have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, and seconded by Commissioner Heavington to allow purchasing to use that car while theirs is in the shop. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Nelda. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution supporting the alternate alignment of US 377 designated as US Business 377 and red destination of the Crescent. Anybody have any questions about this? This is required by text, Doc.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Heavington, seconded by Commissioner Simpson. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Motion...any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the purchase of two storage cabinets for JP Ford office at the courthouse. Mr. Tuggle.
Thank you. Judge, Commissioners, I priced two storage units, storage cabinets that we can utilize in our new office space. We have no closets in the courthouse, so we're going to have to have someplace to store our office supplies. And the measurement that we've taken, we're going to require these two to get the job done. I've already got the pricing from Martin's Office Supply, and waiting... It's your pleasure to...
Yeah, I know. We have the same problem. There's no storage, no closets.
They have doors on them, they just open shut.
They lock. The picture on the back is not real.
I don't believe it is.
Not real good.
I can see the door. Oh, is it a sliding door or not?
No, it's got two doors that open up.
Oh, it's...
It's showing one door open.
Open, yes. Okay.
Showing one door open.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any problem with the Historical Society on color?
So move.
Let's just pick one.
I think like that beige, go with, pretty good with those walls in there. Is that what you were thinking?
Well, I think Kathy is putting down black, but we can do whatever color.
Well, what I...yeah. Doesn't make any difference. Do you use one?
It does say black on the order. Well, how many other people are going to need these, though? I mean...
We checked with purchasing, there's not any used ones around the county. We made the effort first to do that, and there's not any available.
It's going to be a problem in that courthouse.
Yeah, it is a problem in the courthouse.
Maybe we need to see if others need them and see if we can't negotiate a better price on a bunch of them.
What do you think, Nelda?
Instead of one or two at a time.
We've ordered some, haven't we?
No. You used to order furniture, didn't you?
There isn't any...
We're going to need some too.
There's nowhere in the courthouse store stock.
I don't know. We may have, we may have used our existing furniture for hours in some of the upper, you know? Right, right. Yeah. And we don't need that many supplies anyways.
This is just for supplies, is what this is going to be?
Yes, sir.
Forms and things like that?
Yes, sir.
Well, y'all have any more questions? Have a motion to approve or...
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve. It's, I mean, it's a problem. There's, there aren't any closets. You just got bare walls. They got to put the stuff somewhere.
I just wonder why they're needing two of them, is what I'm wondering.
Well, the amount of supplies that we have, that we've got right now...
We have that whole closet upstairs by your office. We need to...
Yes, sir, but we're going to use that for storing old files. We're already stacking up the storage unit out there now.
So it's going to take quite a bit of space in that area.
That'll be downstairs in that big office? No, the...
No, these will be downstairs in the big office, yes, sir. These will be the everyday supplies used by the girls in the office, envelopes, files, forms that we have to use on a daily basis.
Have you laid this out to see if this is all going to fit?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Roan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Heavington.
Well, my question is, I don't want to piecemeal this. We need to see what Chad needs and what the judge needs.
There is a chance I would...I don't know for sure, but we could go back to Martin's if we can give the entire count and everybody agree to a color. Sometimes on, this is on the tips tax contract, which is a state, like it's been competitive with it, sometimes you can get better pricing with more quantity than what you...
Well, the thing is, we've allowed them to buy furniture, and we need to see where we're at on, when the judges and costables furniture come in, but the man sitting right there with the numbers is going to tell you we're spending money fairly quickly.
So y'all want to hold off on this, then?
I think that's a wise decision. If, if we know going in that we've got to purchase two or three more, then I would be in favor of getting a lower price for a volume of units, obviously.
I realize that everybody wants the courthouse to look nice, and what I suggest is, I'm not trying to go against that. There's also a chance that we can look at other ornate baits ourselves. We have bought file cabinets on there before for a little amount of money.
Where is this?
Renee Bates.
It's an auction.
Oh, okay.
I'll take my second back.
No, that's okay. Let's just, all in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Motion failed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We'll, we'll do something else, Danny. All right, consider and take appropriate action matching funds of courthouse Christmas decorations in conjunction with the HCHC, not to exceed $3,500 from Fund 55. We have...who is presenting this?
Well, the...
Hunter and Steve looked at them, out of what we have now.
We took inventory out of Acton, and this is what, this is what the Historic Merchants Association would match.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this matching funds.
So move.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
Motion carried. Convenient, oh, executive session to consultation with the county attorney, and then return into regular session regarding the cross-match contract. Convenient into regular session. I will entertain a motion to let the county attorney negotiate the contract termination with cross-match. with the cross-match.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Simpson. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. It is now 7:42 PM, and we are adjourned.